...reinvigorated communities and they need jobs. We're gonna make sure with this project labor agreement that we hire local. Forty percent is what it's supposed to be.
This is just the beginning, but it's in our lifetime.
You're gonna see the likes of Coffee Bean, Whole Foods, Trader Joe's. You're gonna see all the healthy behavior and healthy activities around here.
For residents here, the future looks bright. The Crenshaw-LAX Light Rail Line is set to open in late 2018. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
There was no guarantee the Lamarck Park Village Station would make it into the blueprints before, but city and county funding makes it a done deal. The Metro Board will begin reviewing design contracts on the Crenshaw-LAX line this month. Well, it's the one time when hacking is considered to be okay. Rasha Goel has more on how an event is helping folks hack into their creativity to help the city of LA come up with the next new tech innovation.
A diverse crowd of computer coding pros as well as amateurs gathered at the Boyle Heights Youth Technology Center to compete for cash and prizes at the Hack for LA event, which is not about breaking into someone else's computer system. This two-day contest challenges techies, entrepreneurs, and software developers to come up with mobile apps that will help improve the quality of life for Angelenos.
They can range everything from transportation routes to understanding, say, where local farmers' markets are, to where playgrounds are, to services for the elderly. It's a whole variety of different types of challenge areas.
Councilmember Eric Garcetti, a key supporter of the event, is thrilled about the idea of integrating technology and government, especially as he takes office as mayor July 1st.
I want us to be a place where people realize that innovation doesn't rest. It goes on all the time here, and this is just the start.
Hack for LA is tied to National Day of Civic Hacking, which is held around the country to promote transparency and participation between government and citizens.
Hopefully, I'll be able to hire some of you here in the near future, and we'll grow the ITA together.
I think it makes you a better programmer when you're working with other people.
This event was the first-ever civic hacking event in LA, but likely, not the last. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
National Day of Civic Hacking took place at 96 cities across the nation. Top cops and firefighters get a hero's tribute at the yearly Zee Awards event in the Valley, but with the councilman responsible for the awards leaving City Hall, Anna Marcos tells us this may be the last of this popular awards ceremony.
Happy Birthday to you!
A proud day for both a father and his sons. The twin sons celebrating their birthday as their father, firefighter Todd Harris, got a nod for his on-the-job performance at the LA Fire Department. The swift-water rescue and brush fire expert, chopper pilot, and reserve deputy sheriff was one of the recipients at the Zee Awards.
I think I'm in the same boat as every firefighter on our job as far as giving 110% when it comes to public service, whether or not it's EMS calls, or fire calls, or just, you know, assisting the public.
This was the 11th annual and perhaps final Zee Awards event, put on by councilmember Dennis Zine as he ends his term. The event helped celebrate police and fire first responders who have stood out for their work in their communities.
Concern for public safety has always been my top priority. It's in my blood, in my heart, in my soul, in my spirit. This year marks my 45th year with the Los Angeles Police Department. Thirty-three active duty, currently a reserve officer. He's deeply committed to his job. He works very, very hard, very proud of the community he serves. That's why so many of you are here today.
It's a great way to recognize a lot of heroes.
In spite of all the VIPs here, the stars of the show were definitely the seven honorees: three LAPD cops, two firefighters, one LA County Sheriff Deputy, and one CHP officer. All everyday heroes doing extraordinary things on the job.
I've arrested almost 1,700 DUI arrests, and I've received 14 awards from Mothers Against Drunk Driving. And next month, I will receive, I was nominated for the California Hero Award.
This'll sound cheesy, but starting with the show Chips back in the early 80s. Ever since then, I was hooked on Highway Patrol. That was it. And I love the job because I get to, I'm not stuck behind a desk. You hear it all the time, but I get to help people, and I really love that.
You could say the swan song for the Zee Awards ended with a bit of a blowout and plenty of celebration for those who keep our communities safe. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
It was completely closed to the public, then approved tour groups were allowed to hold limited kayaking excursions. But now, for the first time since the 1930s, a stretch of the LA River opens to the public for some summertime fun. Gil Reyes has more on the section's grand opening.
Now through Labor Day, you can legally kayak, canoe, even fish in this portion of the LA River, free of charge.
It's two-and-a-half mile stretch only, but we're hopeful that, you know, that this can become bigger and better and, you know, and more areas be opened up.
The 2.5-mile route stretches from Fletcher Drive to Steelhead Park in Alleejen Valley. Families gather for the route's summer season opening. In the past, other parts of the river have briefly opened for the season, but this marks the first time without tour guides and general supervision, so act responsibly.
All the things you do to keep your kids safe in the swimming pool in your house applies here. Keep an eye on your kids, don't let them go astray, make sure they're safe. It's a water body, so it is something to be respected.
Outgoing LA City Councilman Ed Reyes has led the effort to reopen the river after violent floods forced disclosure in the 1930s. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers added concrete and turned it into a flood control channel, but in recent years has worked with the city and conservationists on a compromise.
To do more ecosystem restoration, to do more recreation without giving up the safety and the flood risk management, the flood control.
Though you'll be pretty much on your own, rangers will be patrolling the area to help ensure safety. Some general rules to follow: no motorized boats, no inner tubing, and children under 13 must wear life vests.
But finally, what really is here is that the kids in the area that don't have access to parks, that don't have access to playgrounds, will now have a recreational area to enjoy.
It's open to the public seven days a week from sunrise to sunset. In Alleejen Valley, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
For detailed access routes to the recreation area, log onto lariverrecreation.org. And another project outgoing councilman Reyes is proud of: a busy intersection in his district susceptible to pedestrian and car accidents finally gets a new traffic light. It's a victory for the whole community that's taken a mother's tenacity to achieve. On November 29th, 1993, a drunk driver at the intersection of Sitchell Street and North Broadway struck Cindy Gonzalez. Fourteen years old at the time, Gonzalez spent 15 days in a coma as a result of her injuries.
My daughter Cindy here, she was hurt, and she was also had been, she had been also a student at Sacred Heart. And there's been so many accidents throughout the years, and now, and two years ago when this man crossed the street and he died, I knew then it was time to act.
Councilman Ed Reyes credits a mother's love, and this mother in particular, in helping to make sure this day would come, the day when a traffic signal was installed at Sitchell and North Broadway.
Yeah, but he's gathered 1,700 signatures, was very focused for a good number of years, and never gave up.
An emotional day for community members Beatrice and her daughter Cindy. Nearly 20 years after the accident, Cindy, now in her 30s, is marking a milestone as the city flips the switch on the new signal.
I'm excited I'll be able to finally cross the street since the accident and feel safe.
And the hope is, so will the children who attend Cindy's alma mater, Sacred Heart Elementary School, just a block and a half away from this busy intersection.
As you see the children here, they cross the street every school day, so now they can cross safely looking at the lights.
For Councilman Reyes, this project, one of his last as councilmember representing the city's first district, takes on personal significance.
My sister Letty was struck here at the very same intersection in the 70s. But I want to tell you that because of budget constraints, it's been a very, very difficult project to finish.
As the councilman prepares to leave the job he's had for the past 12 years, he says being able to celebrate the installation of a traffic signal where his own sister was struck decades ago is the cherry on top of the cake. Councilman Reyes reminded the kids that regardless of the signal, they need to look both ways before crossing. A horse trail here in the city has gotten some much-needed work done recently. City leaders join the local equestrian community to celebrate these latest improvements. Yes, there are horse trails here in the city of Los Angeles, including the Toyon Horse Trail here at 5050 Mountain Hollywood Drive at Griffith Park, but it wasn't always a horse trail.
Our past is a bit colorful. Yes, we used to bury a lot of solid waste trash in this place and surrounded by so much natural beauty. But Tom has been a tireless champion of reclaiming this land, and we have heeded his call.
Toyon Canyon operated as a landfill between 1957 and 1985, but it took another 23 years to completely shut down operations. The Bureau of Sanitation began construction in early 2012 to retrofit the site, making it a recreational space for hikers and equestrians to enjoy.
One of the prettiest sights I saw is in the zoo one night, and there was a stream, a stream of horses coming right across one of these benches, one of these ridges, and it was all in silhouette.
Improvements to the Toyon Horse Trail include a new water trough, landscaping, and signage.
We hereby dedicate this for all horses, Slim. You're the one. Here, here. Toyon Canyon. Okay.
And city leaders promise the Toyon Horse Trail is here to stay, with more improvements to come that will restore the canyon's natural beauty for all to enjoy. Koreatown is home to one of the largest Korean populations in the U.S., yet this LA community has never had a senior center until now. Anita Bennett takes us to the opening of the long-awaited facility.
These seniors are celebrating a major milestone, the first-ever senior center geared towards Korean-Americans in Los Angeles.
This is truly historic-making event for the entire Koreans. Have their own great place to enjoy and share the American and Korean cultures together. This is really, a really exciting moment.
Daniel and dozens of others recently gathered for a special luncheon marking the grand opening.
We have many Korean-American seniors. They're gonna have a place to enjoy, so this is the place we got to have.
Yet it took over six years to make the center a reality. Part of the problem, raising enough money to get it off the ground. Then the city stepped in and helped secure more than $1 million from the now-defunct Community Redevelopment Agency.
When the city lost control of the CRA, they brought in like a group of trustees. Initially, they decided not to fund this project, but they, a lot of support from Mealy and others, and we were able to get the final money that they need.
According to the latest census, more than 20,000 senior citizens live in Koreatown. The center will offer classes and activities in Korean and English to make them feel at home.
It's a place of like gathering where it's safe, and it's also a place for people to meet friends, you know, senior citizens. Instead of staying home, they can hang out and meet other friends here.
Some of the folks here say they plan to make this a regular stop.
Are you planning to come here much?
As much as I can, yes.
The center is large enough to accommodate up to 250 people, and they'll offer a host of services, including free lunch, some medical care, and even dance classes. In Koreatown, I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. Before the center opened, area seniors often gathered in a parking lot of a McDonald's in Koreatown. A popular exhibit at the LA Zoo temporarily gets a new name. Outgoing Mayor V helps extend a deal with the Chinese company that operates at the port of LA, and a school shares its new playground with the community. These stories and more in City Beat. These gorillas at the Los Angeles Zoo help bring awareness about the plight of their relatives in the wild, which include poaching and habitat loss. But on a recent weekend, they were focused on something a bit more lighthearted, helping to promote Nintendo 3D's new game. And just for that weekend, the gorilla reserve was temporarily renamed Donkey Kong Country Returns 3D at Campo Gorilla Reserve.
The game's really cool, and you have a lot of adventures in here.
The new games are violent. They're too much violence, too much blood, too much gun shooting. This is wonderful for kids.
Families got to enjoy visiting the real gorilla reserve as well as taking pictures with the costumed Donkey Kong character. Outgoing Mayor Antonio Villaregosa recently went on a trade mission to China, his last trip overseas as mayor. And while there, the mayor announced an extended lease agreement with the Chinese shipper. Chinese firm Yang Ming's lease at the port of LA has been lengthened another nine years to 2030, which the mayor says could bring as much as $525 million in revenue. In return, port officials have agreed to add $122 million in improvements to the wharf the firm uses. The city is committed to building new parks and refurbishing existing ones, but it's also partnering with the Los Angeles Unified School District to open up school playgrounds to the community at large. And that's the case over at Vine Street Elementary School, where councilmember Tom Labonge recently helped debut a new play structure that both students at the school and residents will be able to enjoy. The park is open to the public on weekends during the school year and seven days a week during the summer. As temperatures continue to rise, a reminder to make sure you protect your pets from the heat. The city's Animal Services Department says that when it is hot for you, it is even hotter for dogs and cats, who do not sweat through their skin but through panting. So make sure your pet has plenty of fresh water to drink. And just like with children, it is dangerous to leave your dog or cat in a car for even five minutes. And if your dog spends time in the yard, make sure there is plenty of shade to keep him or her comfortable. You don't have to go to a museum to take in an exhibit. In fact, all you have to do is visit the LA Central Library, where currently on display is an exhibit about an artist who blazed trails in the art of film. 2001: A Space Odyssey, Lolita, Doctor Strangelove. These are decades-old films that still resonate with film audiences and that have cemented their place in pop culture and film history. The exhibit Stanley Kubrick: A Life in Film is on display now at the LA Central Library's Art Department atrium until June 30th. The exhibit features a small collection of poster and still photography images from the director's film works.
When we first heard about the exhibit at LACMA, which is a major exhibit on Kubrick's work, we were really excited, and we wanted to do something here that would tie in with that exhibit, but it would also feature the multitude of resources that we have here
Whether listening to the musical themes of 2001, viewing his symbolic use of red, or exploring the universe through recent and historic images from the NASA archives, this multimedia exhibit both takes you back to the films themselves as well as furthers the dialogue.
It's very inspiring. We've been sort of overdosing on the space station stuff lately with the expedition returning and the new one going up. So, yeah, it's been really exciting, so it was kind of fun to walk in here and see all this stuff here. Actually, we just watched 2001 again, too, so we've been in a big-space mode lately.
The curator of this exhibit says what sets Stanley Kubrick apart from his contemporaries was all in the detail.
For instance, with the Barry Lyndon film, he researched 18th-century painting, lifestyle, furniture, almost anything you can touch on.
Kubrick's films, including 13 full-length ones, provoked, challenged, and sometimes confounded, and they continue to do so today nearly 15 years after the filmmaker's passing. The Central Library has also been screening some of Kubrick's films during this exhibit. You can still catch the last of the film screenings, Doctor Strangelove, on June 29th at 1:00 p.m. at the library's Meeting Room A. In this week's List of Things to Do: A hike with a positive message, Fun at Night in Chinatown, and the annual Beastly Ball at the LA Zoo. If you're an avid hiker and looking for a fun group hike, look no further than the ultimate fun hike up Mountain Hollywood on Saturday, June 15th, from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. On average, between 100-plus hikers of all ages and fitness levels attend. Meet at Roosevelt Cafe at 2650 North Vermont Canyon Road. This event bills itself as positive-minded, with motivation sessions at the summit overlooking beautiful views of LA. You'll also stop for some healthy grub from Cafe Gratitude Hollywood at the end of the hike and some Jamba Juice as well. The event is free with passes available by going to summitemotivation.com. You can also sign up on the day of the hike at the park, but a voluntary $10 donation is suggested per person. LA Chinatown joins forces with KCRW 89.9 FM to present Chinatown Summer Nights on three separate Saturdays this summer, the first of which takes place on Saturday, June 15th, from 5:00 to 11:55 p.m. The party featuring music, food, art, and culture takes place in Chinatown from 9:42 to 9:51 North Broadway. Listen to great live bands on the LA Weekly Stage and dance the night away, or nosh at gourmet food trucks and great Chinatown restaurants. Shop at the LA Craft Experience Market and at Chinatown Shops, or experience live cooking demos, hands-on cultural workshops, and much more. Go to chinatownsummernights.com for details and other dates. This is an annual event that's got a lot of bite. The LA Zoo's Beastly Ball takes place this year on Saturday, June 15th, starting at 6:00 p.m. You'll get to stroll through the zoo's lush grounds, come face-to-face with the zoo's animal residents, and enjoy a beastly feast. There will also be a silent auction, dancing, and entertainment. The LA Zoo is located at 5333 Zoo Drive. To purchase individual tickets or for additional event information, call 323-644-4753. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. But before the Beastly Ball takes place on June 15th, the zoo gave a sneak peek of the beastly feast that will await attendees. Anita Bennett was there for a look at this menu with a bite.
As these excited preschoolers get up close with some of the LA Zoo's reptilian residents, just a few feet away, Zoo brass and celebrity supporter Betty White are getting ready for the annual Beastly Ball.
Oh, how cute can you be?
White hosted a preview of the menu that will be dished up at the gathering on Saturday, June 15th.
Today, we have a, we're calling it a cotton-top coconut cupcake in honor of this cute little monkey here.
Yummy cupcakes and several other popular LA eateries will be donating some of their favorite dishes to help raise money for the zoo's soon-to-open Rainforest of the Americas exhibit.
We love the zoo. We have done this for three years, and we feel it's really important to give back to the community.
One restaurant even whipped up a plate of zoo-themed pasta.
We have some tortelloni, homemade tortelloni stuffed with seafood in a lobster sauce.
City Councilman Tom Labonge, whose district includes the zoo, says the facility is about much more than just cute animals.
The Los Angeles Zoo and Botanical Gardens is an educational institute for the conservation efforts that we do, and I'm very proud of those who work in the zoo.
TV legend Betty White has worked with the zoo for more than 50 years.
We always have a project, and we're always building toward that. But then to look around at like the gorilla exhibit, the chimpanzee exhibit, all the things we've worked so hard for, and to see them as realities, it's exciting.
The Beastly Ball is put together by the Greater Los Angeles Zoo Association, or GLAZA, and tickets are going for $1,000 per person.
Traditionally, this event raises about $1 million each year, and organizers are hoping all this food will inspire donors to dig a little deeper into their pockets. At the Los Angeles Zoo, I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lecityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook.
Hello, I'm Los Angeles Mayor Antonio Villaregosa. As the second-largest city in the country, Los Angeles is home to more immigrants from across the globe than any other city. To help the many in our community who aspire to the dream of U.S. citizenship, the city has partnered with U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services to install citizenship corners at all 73 Los Angeles public libraries. Immigrants will find citizenship test study materials along with information on the naturalization process and eligibility requirements. Here, immigrants can take their first step toward becoming a U.S. citizen. Our library personnel are trained to help guide you and provide you with the resources you need to be successful. Citizenship programs and English literacy classes are also provided at the libraries. And the best part is, it's free. Your path to U.S. citizenship starts at the Los Angeles Public Library. Visit lapl.org/citizenship to learn more.
G'day, Troy McCavon from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
We have a quorum, and I apologize to IT for not giving you the signal that it was time to go live, so I do apologize for that. If we could do the first order of business, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Or call a roll, and then we'll do the first order of business.
Alarcon Buscagno, England, Garcetti, Weza, Corretz, LaBons, Parks, President Zine, Westin, members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes?
Corretz moves, Buscagno seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Labonge moves, Zine seconds, next.
Mr. President, there are requests to receive and file Item 1B inasmuch as the taxpayer has resolved the outstanding liability, and to continue Items, uh, excuse me, continue Item 1C to July 31st, Items 1E, F, G, and H to June 26, Item 2 to June 19, Item 4 to June 25, and Item 26 to June 19.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order?
Very good, sir. Item 1, and Items 1A and 1D remain. It is an item notice for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, sir, we do.
So we'll hold that item. Let's move on.
Mr. President, Items 3 through 18 are items for which public hearings have been held. A committee report for Item 2 will be distributed shortly and should be held on the desk until that time.
You said Item 2. I thought we continued Item.
I'm sorry, that's... That was Item 2, yes, sir.
Okay, so we have Items 3 through 18 before us, and we have satisfied the public comment portion. So, members, 3 through 18, any specials? 3 through 18, any specials? See none? Mr. Corretz, you've got that look in your eye. You're good? Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And, Mr. President, the ordinance matter. Item 3 will go over one week unless reconsidered later for 12 members.
Well, it's my understanding, and I'm optimistic, that we will be at 12 members sometime during today, and at that point in time, it is my intention to reconsider that item and then vote on it again today. Mr. Corretz?
Yes, I'd like to ask that Item 19 from yesterday's agenda be reconsidered.
Okay, in order to do that, what must we do, Mr. Clerk? He wants to reconsider Item 19 from yesterday.
Mr. President, we must first vote on reconsideration of the matter, and then, upon passing, that matter will be before council.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration.
Mr. President, if I may, Item 19 is Council File 13-0682, and that has to do with waiving the repaving requirements at Carrollwood Drive.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Corretz?
Yes, now I'd like to ask that the item be continued to this Friday's council meeting.
Without objection, that'll be the order. Let's proceed with the agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that brings us to Items 19 through 31. They're items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Cards?
Yes, sir. We have cards on Items 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 28, and 31. We have cards on Items 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 28, and 31.
Okay, let's hold those items. Let's, members, specials? Members, specials? Okay, let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Next section?
Mr. President, that brings us to Items 32 through 34. They're items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
First of all, do we have any cards?
No, sir.
Okay, then I'll defer to our Chair, Budget and Finance.
32 through 35.
Mr. Corian, on these closed session items, how would you like to proceed?
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget and Finance has considered Items 32 through 35, and recommends approval based on the recommendations.
Okay, well...
We can vote on those in open session unless members have particular questions.
Then that's what we shall do. Mr. Clerk, would you read those items, and then let's vote on them?
Yes, sir. Item 32, in the case entitled "Loson versus City of Los Angeles," there is a recommendation to expend $150,000 in settlement. Item 33, in the case entitled "Abudufay Agogo versus City of Los Angeles," there is a recommendation to expend $112,000 in settlement. Item 34, in the case entitled "Thomas Grant versus City of Los Angeles," there is a recommendation to expend $130,000 in settlement. And Item 35, in the case entitled "Gonzalo Escobedo versus City of Los Angeles," there is a recommendation to expend $150,000 in settlement.
Okay, so now, on those items, let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, with that said, let's move to, or no, let me ask you what's next, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations or items called special.
Okay, you know what, I keep thinking today is Tuesday, so I was waiting to do the flag salute. So, with that said, why don't we vote on the ordinances? It would appear that we're at 13 members now, so what do we want to reconsider? Item 4, and is it 19?
It's Item 3, sir, that we've adopted. Item 19 has yet to be considered.
And you said we had a card on that item, correct?
Item 19, sir, yes. 3 could be reconsidered at this time if you'd like, though.
Okay, so we'll hold on Item 19 for a bit, and we will deal with Item 3. So let's, were there cards on 3?
No, sir.
Okay, then let's vote on that, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, Item 3 is now before you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on Item 3. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, thank you.
Fourth with on 3.
Per Mr. Laban's, fourth with. Mr. Clerk? Mr. Laban?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to introduce again Ken Brecht right here, and also very special Communications Director that's with today is Katie Durham. Stand up, they just published, which they do every year quarterly, the summer schedule for the Library Foundation. This is the Library Foundation, the great arm of our public library and their great support. Give them a big hand. And made I slip right in here because they use the library, the great champions from Cathedral Chapel School in the Miracle Mile of the City of Los Angeles, number one in the third position in state, and top in all other categories. Give them a big hand there, the academic decadentals. We had a wonderful program out at their school, and they all got their presentation, no need for a presentation, but they wanted to see us here in action. Thank you Cathedral Chapel, good job.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Laban, for those presentations, and Tom, if you can hang around for a minute. Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
So now we can just proceed with today's business, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have two quick announcements. First, I hope I have the attention of the members. Now, I don't know if it's something in the water, but we've been starting our meetings after 10:20. If we do that again, and I don't want to do it, I will cancel that session. Council starts at 10:00. Please do a better job in getting here. Now, I know, things do come up, but we need to be very sensitive of the people who come here from the public, our department heads, and other individuals that are waiting for us to do our job so that they can do their job. We have a bunch of new members that will be here at July 2nd meeting. We do not want to set a bad example for them. Now, I hate to tell you that, but if we get to the point where it's 10:20, then we're out of here. The other announcement that I need to make pertains to public comment. Members, you can come here, or not members, people from the public, you can come here and on general public comment, say just about anything you would like. But when you are giving your comment on the actual agendized items, you are supposed to speak to that item. In the event you come up and one time deviate from that item, you will forfeit your time. I do not want to get into any more verbal fencing matches with Mr. Walsh in particular, so I want to make this crystal clear. The moment you go off topic on an agendized item, your time is forfeit. So you have been, you have been read the rules, and I welcome you to come here, I don't mind it at all, but we have to run this house in an orderly fashion, and that's the way it's going to be. So with that said, what's next on the agenda, Mr. Clerk? Item 1?
Mr. President, that brings us to Item 1, called special for cards.
Okay, if we could have Mr. Walsh, Mr. Spindler, and Mr. Sacks on Item 1.
All right.
Go ahead, Mr. Spindler.
Yes, some of these items are being hopefully settled, but since it's the end of the fiscal year and there's a new council coming in, why not give amnesty to these people? In Washington, DC, they're going to give amnesty to every illegal alien in the country that's been here since December 2011. These are businesses. These are tax-paying, job-creating businesses. Why are we continually harassing these businesses for these ridiculous ancient so-called unpaid taxes, which the numbers are always skewed, you don't really know exactly how much the amount is? Kalen Arman, MD, he's a doctor, Telvent Corporation, parking companies, over in Alameda, they have vacated parking garages and just left, take the machines and go, rather than continue business. The city's not collecting its taxes, the employees have been fired, and these lots are just sitting there vacant so people just park there and for free or abandon their cars there. So, in the spirit of the new mayor, Eric Garcetti, who of course is here today, as he never misses a meeting, I would urge, well, he's here in spirit, I would urge that these fine businesses be given an amnesty, that these lien amounts be wiped out and expunged so that we may start the new fiscal year, letting everybody know that LA is a business-friendly city, because that's what the voters wanted, that's why they elected Garcetti, and that's why they said no to the opponent. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Sacks. Mr. Sacks, I don't see you. Yes?
John Walsh blogging, for identification purposes only, John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Okay, here, no amnesty. Let's talk about these people who owe, hey, anybody owes me a dollar, and I'm Jewish, you better pay me that dollar. Okay, this is the people who owe the city money. Kalen Arimi, MD, $16,000. Telvent USA Corporation, $14,000. Fine Line Inc., $10,000. Faithcom, $8,000. Abbey California Parking, remember when you palk at Abbey, they owe the city $5,700, and then another lien from Abbey California Park, $105,000. Yeah, all that is chicken feed, huh? Right, Mr. Garcetti? He's giving me, he's under the table.
No, you're not on subject, that's it. Your time is over. Okay, Mr. Sacks? No, cut his mic, and if you leave the podium shouting back or talking back, you're disrupting the meeting, and then you will be shown the door. Come on, Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. When these liens are recorded, it's a function of the Office of Finance to do the paperwork, to send the notices out. There's no inspection, right? It's just an Office of Finance item. So, in the hierarchy of the city's employing personnel, is this office funded fully so that all positions are, that are funded are full, so that they maintain full accountability for people that owe the city money? When you had your budget discussions, there was a lot of discussion about, especially from some of the union members, about not having the ability to collect unpaid monies due to the city. They were a drain on the budget. So if your finance department has a full accountability of personnel, but you don't have the personnel to go out and basically get the funds, or to follow up on getting the funds, there seems to be a disconnect there. So I'm wondering how and when the City Council will address that matter, to have full positions in departments...
Mr. President, this is not the time to address that matter, that's a policy matter, not addressed by the side.
Okay, then, Mr. Sacks, Mr. Sacks, your time is over. Okay, let's get, no, 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 no. And if you keep doing that, you're disrupting the meeting. One more time, in fact, show Mr. Sacks the door since he doesn't want to cooperate. Mr. Sacks, go on. Go on, you're disrupting, you're continuing to disrupt this meeting. All right, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, if I can ask for Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Weezer, we'd like to get to your presentation.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President, and good morning, colleagues. And today, we are here to celebrate the 40th anniversary of a great small business in the El Surino community known as El Aguila Bakery, which is one of the longest operating businesses in El Surino. Certainly the longest operating bakery, and if you ever have tried some of their pan dulce, which you hear, we have some here in the back, you'll know why. I'm joined by the owner, Roberto Flores. And El Aguila Bakery opened its door in 1973 before Paulina Casillas, the original owner and head baker, passed away. He handed down his incredible and successful original baking recipes and techniques that are still used today. Current owner, Roberto Flores, and his wife, Olivia Flores, are from Guadalajara Jalisco in Mexico. They are the proud parents of two hard-working children, Olivia Flores and Roberto Junior, who helped manage the daily operations of the bakery. In 2012, El Aguila Bakery renovated their bakery and restored their landmark neon sign which has welcomed customers since 1973. The panaderia, as it's known in Spanish, and its owners have long been generous supporters of the community, donating to many causes and events throughout the years. As an owner, Mr. Flores takes pride in employing people from the community, even some who have worked at El Aguila for more than 25 years. El Aguila Bakery is a great example of a small family-owned business that is not only successful, but fully invested in the community of El Surino, which they have called home for 40 years. They set a very high benchmark for other businesses. Any community would be proud to have them, and the community of El Surino certainly is, keeping them in business for 40 years. And so with that, I want to present to El Aguila Bakery a resolution from the City of Los Angeles, thanking them for not only employing local people and providing us great bakery goods, but also for the commitment to the community, supported the community on many, many occasions. Congratulations, felicidades, muchisimas gracias.
Want to say a few words? Let me hold this. You want to say a few words?
I just want to thank you, Tom Mice, for El Surino City, who's been supporting the business for so many years, and all the community who's been with us for 40 years. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's come this way.
Thank you, Council Weezer, and we do have pan dulce in the back. Some cafecito would be really nice. Okay, Mr. Clerk, what's next?
That brings us to Item Number 19, called special for cards.
Okay, we have several cards on this item. Dr. Tom Williams, Alba Yanis, Wayne Spindler, and Arnold Sacks. Doctor?
El Surino again, Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council Transportation Subcommittee Chairperson. But anyway, El Surino, we got Elephant Hill. It's now the elephant in our neighborhood. I supported getting Elephant Hill. The problem with Elephant Hill is who's going to use it? Like Ascot Park, like our new community recreation center over on Alhammer Avenue, they're at the edge, they're not in the midst. If you go to El Surino Recreation Center, you'll see a lot of people, because it's within walking distance. LA, for over 40 years, has been deficient in the neighborhood parks. We have a lot of big parks, but nobody uses them compared to a small park called Guardia Park in El Surino. It's in the neighborhood. We need to allow for some of this property perhaps to be sold for residential development, and the proceeds be used for development of parks within the community, within 1,000 feet of neighborhoods. We have density. We have some pockets of remaining open space near Guardia, near Eastern. All these areas are much more beneficial than Elephant Hill. I love Elephant Hill, except that it's too far away for most people to use. So keep most of it, but can we add to the conditions of the sale that portions of it can be sold for residential development, and the proceeds be used within El Surino? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have a little problem here.
Mr. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Spindler, can we have Ms. Yanis? And you'll be after her.
A what?
Ms. Yanis, then you.
Oh, I thought I was not.
No problem.
Good morning. My name is Alveyanis, and I'm a resident of El Surino. It's great to be here today. The struggle to get to this day has lasted a generation, but thanks to the leadership of Councilmember Weezer and the support of this council, we are about to enter a new era, one that is positive, proactive, and conservation-focused. We urge you to vote in favor of the sale of these parcels to the MRCA. This acquisition will result in a permanent protection of a portion of the unique natural resource in a community that is surrounded by undeveloped hillside land, but has less than one acre of publicly accessible parkland per 1,000 residents. When MRCA secures additional funds to create a trail system on the newly acquired parcels, the hundreds of El Surino residents who use Colas Avenue adjacent to these particular parcels will be able to have a new natural destination to explore. These efforts also set the stage for future environmental improvements and connections to a broader network of parks, including Guardia Park, Ascot Hills, and Debs Park. We thank Councilmember Weezer for his outstanding leadership and his staff for their dedicated efforts over the last eight years. We also thank the GSD Department, General Services Department, the City Attorney's Office, and the Planning Department for their work to move this acquisition forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Spindler?
Yeah, as I was saying, here we are selling city resources in one of the hottest real estate markets we've had in the past five and a half years, and we didn't bother here at the city to find out an appraisal of how much, in an arms-linked transaction, these parcels could bring to a willing seller, to a willing buyer. The seller being the city, a buyer being who knows. $495,000 for something, and I'm sure this is more than an acre of land. It must be a larger parcel than that. This could be worth millions of dollars. So there are services for a commission which not, the city wouldn't have to pay a dollar. You could put them up for auction and see how much they would bring, and you could counter that bid with a minimum reserve. These kinds of things are not being done in a city that continues to squander opportunities to develop. When you, when you sell these things to a Mountains Recreation Conservancy, you're not going to get Quimby fees, you're not going to get street improvements, you're not going to get property taxes for the schools, for fire stations. It's just going to go into a land trust. One of the most abusive of these is the Santa Monica Mountains Recreation Conservancy that has little cameras taking photographs and mailing people parking tickets for stopping at red lights. These people have not shown themselves to be the kind of actors that should be getting these, these land valuations for this, this is peanuts, for this type of a parcel, especially a view parcel. So I know it'll pass, but, and nobody cares because everybody's termed out July 1st, but you're giving away multi-millions of dollars of revenue for nothing, and future billions of dollars in funds for property taxes.
I believe that concludes all the cards. Councilor Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I first want to thank all of you for supporting Elephant Hill throughout the years. I recall back maybe six years ago or five years ago, when this council took the action to preserve the Elephant Hill area as open space for the local community. Many of you who know El Surino, it's a beautiful community with hillsides and lots of open space, and the community would like to keep it that way. This area, as you know, was threatened with development that was not consistent with the local community, and through your actions, we were able to preserve this space as open space. The city then purchased some of this property, and we are now building a park for all the community to enjoy and for all the City of Los Angeles and surrounding communities to enjoy. This here is an action that will finally sell some parcels that are undevelopable because of their topography and the way they sit. And moving this forward will allow the Mountains Conservancy to build some trails and make it that open space trail area that we would like to see, and hopefully keep this in its natural habitat. So I want to thank the General Services Department, CAO, and City's Attorney's Office for working to bring this package to us in a timely fashion since our vote late last year on this item. We also want to thank the Mountains Conservancy for their work and moving expeditiously to create the type of area that was promised to the community when we decided to move forward. This is a 30-year battle, and we are now fulfilling the local community's wants and needs, and the City of Los Angeles and this council should be proud of that, so I want to thank you. Last but not least, I want to thank all the residents of the local community. If it wasn't for your efforts, we probably wouldn't preserve this, this open space. This, along with Ascot Hills, I think the El Surino community could be proud that it has added over 100 acres of new open space to the local community in the last few years. So congratulations, and we look forward to hiking up there for many more years to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor Weezer. We do have Councilor Labons on the queue. Councilor Labons?
Congratulations, Mr. Weezer, for your leadership on this. There's nothing like open space because it gives the beauty of a family to visualize and be part of nature. And the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and the job that they've done, where they've not only gone west, but they've come east and far east into the heart of the city of Los Angeles, which is so important. I remember this, was it six years ago? I was sitting on that side of the room, and somebody was saying this, and this is a great part of Los Angeles that people love, and to see the beauty of the mountains, I'm just, feel so good for you, Jose. And also for Ascot, which you got to give a little credit to DWP because it was their land that they found a way to get it to the people, which is so key. So great leadership. I look forward, going with you, Mr. Weezer, and the second hike, the second hike. I want to make sure you send your deputies on the first hike so those rattlesnakes get out of the way. I'm teasing you. Congratulations, everybody. Good job, Jose and staff.
There, and plant some trees with you, if that's, if you'd love to do that. All right.
Okay. See no one else on the queue? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number 20, called Special for Cards.
Okay, the person that submitted a card is no longer in the chamber. Mr. Clerk? No longer in the chamber? The person that signed that card?
Unless council, any member would like to speak, you can open the roll then.
Okay, is anyone going to comment on item 20? See no one? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
I want to thank Mr. Reyes for that accommodation. So we're on what item, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings us to item 21, called Special for Cards.
Okay, item 21. I don't have that for some reason. Can you tell me? We, we have no cards. Can you, can you verify that, though? Okay. All right, members. Okay, let's, on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item?
Item 22, called Special for Cards.
John Walsh, please come forward, sir.
What's up? It was continued to the 19th.
This is item 22. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Authorization to use Urban Development Action Grant savings in the amount of $25,000 in support of Central Avenue Farmers Market. We are 100% in favor of this. I am programmed to speak only on the agenda item. Thank you. I am a slave.
No, thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next?
Item 23, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh, please come forward. Item 23. Mr. Walsh passes on this item. Members, if we could please open the roll, Madam Clerk, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That brings us to what item, Mr. Clerk?
24, called Special for Cards.
And that card is by Mr. John Walsh. Please come forward. Item 24.
Communication Grant Funds Cal Recycle. Recommendation: Authorized Interim General Manager. Local Agency Enforcement Grant EA 24, 24, 24, 24, EA 24, in the amount of $62,543. Dollars, dollars. Authorized Controller. This robot is in favor of this motion. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, what's next, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings us to item 28, called Special for Cards.
And item 28 is called special by Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh passes on item 28. If we could please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, next?
Item 31, called Special for Cards.
Okay, that would be Mr. Arnold Sacks, who decided to leave us this morning, followed by Wayne Spindler. Please come forward. It's my understanding you have one minute remaining.
Okay. Anyway, I would defer to the robot who would support the, he's been programmed to support all of these motions and amendments, but, I mean, here's an example, CD 12. Look at that, $1,282 Quimby fee. Now see, the guy that represents CD 12, the Russian Englander, he, he's getting the money. But now you go to the prior where you're in El Surino and you're giving away parcels to the Mountains Conservancy for half a million, that's bad business. This is good business. Now, this Porter Ranch area, I've actually driven up there, it's a beautiful equestrian area, and it should remain that way, but they're going to tear it all apart and build high-rises and multi-unit apartment buildings. That's the future we want under our new mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this, members. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, next item?
Mr. President, that brings us to item 25. It was called Special for Cards. I believe that card has been withdrawn, though.
Item 25?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then let's, there are no speakers on the queue. Let's, Madam Clerk, prepare to vote on that. If you'd please open the roll. Now, if you would, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move that item 14 on yesterday's agenda, council file 13-0705 regarding the Melrose Business Improvement District be reconsidered.
Okay, were you just not here, Mr. Corretts, yesterday?
No, no, I was here.
Let's, okay, let's vote on reconsideration. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Corretts, we have reconsidered the item. How would you suggest we proceed?
Well, yesterday, we did something very significant in my district by passing the Melrose bid with unanimous support. However, we are facing some deadlines to get this ballot to the voters in that district, and apparently, an amendment needs to be made to the ordinance according to the city clerk's office. So this is a technical change as a substitute motion. It is being circulated, and I would ask for an aye vote on this technical change so we can expedite the process and move it forward.
Okay, avoc? Is that the item I just signed?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Corretts, why don't we hold that for a bit? Oh, wait, no, no, it has been circulated. We can vote on it. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that's been voted, given approval with the amendment. Mr. Corretts?
I'd also like to ask that that go forthwith.
Forthwith. Next item?
Mr. President, council has motion, or, excuse me, that brings us to general public comment.
Okay. Dr. Williams, John Walsh, Arnold Sacks, he's not here, Wayne Spindler, and Henry Marine, please come forward.
Dr. Tom Williams, L.A. 32 Neighborhood Council. We get one, two minutes. Thank you. We have a problem arising again and again and again and again and again in Los Angeles, El Surino, the 710 corridor. They're doing more public relations from Caltrans and MTA. There's going to be more meetings regarding the 710 alternatives in July of this year within the city of Los Angeles. Our L.A. DOT has never objected to construction of the tunnel beginning in El Surino. And in fact, the alternatives for the F7X single or multi-tube tunnel system is still extending well into El Surino, all the way up to the Union Pacific Railroad. We're quite concerned that L.A. DOT, which has no effective commission or public input, has never told Caltrans and MTA that the City Council has rejected any construction within the city of Los Angeles, including the tunnel access shaft, the tunneling, and its connector to the rest of the portal of the 710 tunnel system. We're going to get more whitewash coming now and through July. We're going to have L.A. 32 Neighborhood Council meetings regarding it this week, next week, and the week after. So we don't know who is in charge of L.A. DOT, or if anyone is. Maybe it's just a renegade department within the city. Hopefully, next fiscal year, we'll have better results.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Walsh? Mr. Walsh?
I'd like to thank my robot for being up here before. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Go and see how we predicted four years ago that Garcetti would beat Gruel. It's right up there at the post. Okay, yesterday, crime is down in Hollywood, right, Mr. Garcetti? He's still hiding under the table. Murder, we had a murder yesterday morning about, during council time, another murder in Hollywood. I'd like to point out that you can attack the other members for not showing up till 20 after, but the fact is that our presidente, Herb, didn't show up till 5 after. If you're late, you're late. When you were in fourth grade, if you're five minutes late, you had to stay after school. That's what you must do to these people. You must make them stay after the meeting and do standards. I must not be late. I must not be late. We call them standards a thousand times. Okay, so we had a big party here, nobody showed up. There were three or 400 people that showed up at the mayor's party, maybe 500. Don Pepe did a great performance in front of a stragglers because they put them on late because they put on the white performers early, and the mayor put on the Mexican superstar at 9 o'clock. That's called politically correct racism. And I just want to say that pretty soon, I'm coming back with the cake for all of you, and the cake is full of Oreo cookies. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, next?
I think with the tardiness, this is like senioritis, I think you should excuse the tardiness because there are many members aren't going to be coming back anymore. They're going to be leaving. This is the last couple of weeks. So it's time now to just loosen the rules, give everybody till 11 o'clock to arrive at their earliest convenience because traffic is terrible. I got on the 405 today, and wouldn't you know it, Mr. Keretz's district, he put up a sign on Havenhurst that told me, and I didn't know this, that you can take Havenhurst to the 405 freeway south. I didn't know that, but there's a large sign there, and it must have cost a couple of hundred thousand dollars. It sits there with a generator, but we needed that because nobody knew that you could take that street over to the 405. So also, since we really have a lame duck administration, July 1st, we're going to have a whole new council with many new members. So we need to vote, you're going to need to vote on a new council president. You have to have a council president that's going to be here for a long time, and many of these people here, including yourself, are not going to be here for longer than one more term, two or four years. The perfect choice for the new council president, Paul Keretz, he should become the new council president. He seems very organized. He never misses a meeting. He's never late to a meeting. You go to the ENCs, he's there. He says he's going to be there at 8:15, he's there at 8:15, always on time. He's paving right now, every street in Encino right now is being resurfaced as I speak right now at this moment. They're working day and night. So the perfect leader, the new council president, July 1st, Paul Keretz.
Okay, thank you, Henry. Mr. Keretz, you have one vote. Too bad it doesn't count, but you do have one. Yes, sir.
I'd like to announce my candidacy for council president. Although I will not be accepting any votes other than my own.
Mr. Labange?
As they go on the way, Mr. Marine, thank you for holding Marymount High School right here. Give them a hand, they're being turd by the mayor's office.
Marymount High School.
Wave to everybody right here. Good high school students learning about Los Angeles government. Thanks to Mayor Vera Gosa and the staff. Thank you, everybody. Marymount, aye.
Welcome to City Hall. Mr. Marine?
Hackland Cole MOU show every percent, the colleagues of John Ferraro and Tom Labange authorize their appointees to have payroll shelter from the pay of craftsmen employed less than six months, AKA $1,000. But as you know, management failed to account for this money as required by law. And as you know, Mr. Martin Ludlow, he had a vested duty to the union-affiliated public employees and to the people of LA. Consequently, the government gave him the opportunity to prove to the people that money sheltered from the pay of union-affiliated public employees on behalf of the union and public officials, these people do not legally work. Consequently, Mr. Westen and his colleagues now have a fiduciary duty to make management account for this money, recover this money sheltered heretofore and henceforth again today, since today is payday, or you will be in breach of your fiduciary duty. But it doesn't, I don't see anybody looking at me, so you must not be too concerned. You're used to violating people's rights. So I guess you're going to continue on doing it. So we'll have to get, wait for, instead of people from A to Z being in here, it'll be BBB. Maybe we'll get Better Business Bureau working here, right? But anyway, use your last chance. You've got 12 working days to turn yourself around, or, you know, the address over at the city jail is 180 North Los Angeles Street. You could always turn around 180 and get back on the right track. But I guess you people don't know nothing about...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes today's general public comment. Mr. Clerk, where are we on the agenda?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred?
The desk is clear.
Okay, now announcements, and I'll start it out. I want to give a very special thank you to Mayor-elect Garcetti for, he was excused yesterday, but he agreed to come in, which allowed me to spend some time in Palm Springs playing golf, but more importantly, celebrating my 32nd wedding anniversary. So to Mr. Garcetti, I say again, thank you. I'm sorry you're not here, but thank you very much, and my wife and I truly appreciate what you've done. Members, other announcements. Mr. Labange?
For Mr. Weisar, item 19, forthwith, please.
Forthwith, item 19. Other announcements. Could everyone in the council please rise for adjourning motions? Everybody in the council chambers, please rise. Okay, I'll start on the right side of the horseshoe. Yes, Mr. Rosenthal?
Forthwith on 24?
Okay, forthwith on 24. All right. Seen none? Let me go to the other side, the left side, Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Curtis Lee Edwards, who was born in Las Cruces, New Mexico in July 1929 and passed away at the age of 83 on Sunday, June 2013. Curtis was a proud and ambitious young man. He entered the Army in 1951 and participated in the Korean conflict. Shortly after his honorable discharge from the rank of sergeant, he met and married his wife, Alice. In August 1957, he joined the Los Angeles Police Department and served 26 years, and this is at a time in which there were very few minority officers. Curtis overcame many obstacles for his service, and he managed to pave the way for future generations and retired as a lieutenant of police in 1983. He then, following the loss of his wife, Alice, he married his childhood sweetheart, Eloise Hart, in 1999, and enjoyed a life of traveling around the world and attending his local church in Union Missionary Baptist Church where he served as a deacon. His funeral services were held Saturday, June 8th, at the Riverside National Cemetery. He survived by his wife, Eloise, and his children, Jacqueline and Harry, and a host of family members. I'd also ask that we adjourn in memory of Flynn James Robinson, born 1941, in Elgin, Illinois, passed away in May 2013 at the age of 72. Flynn was a sharpshooting guard who came off the bench to add scoring punch to one of the greatest NBA teams in history, the 1971-72 Lakers. When he played for Milwaukee Bucks, their broadcaster, Ed Duchet, called him the Electric Eye. When he joined the Lakers, the late broadcaster, Chick Hearn, referred to him as Mr. Instant Point. The 6'1 Robinson was reserved behind Jerry West and Gail Goodrich on the Laker team that won a record 33 consecutive games and went with a total record of 69 and 13 for the regular season, and then captured the first, their first league championship in Los Angeles, beating the Knicks in five games. Playing an average of 15 minutes a game in the regular season, he averaged nine points, complementing a starting lineup of Wilt Chamberlain at center, Jim McMillan, Happy Hairston at forward, and the high-scoring backcourt of West and Goodrich. Robinson tormented opponents with his long-range jump shot even before they counted it as three points. He played in only one All-Star game in 1970 and is on his way to averaging 21 points a game for Milwaukee and leading the NBA in free throwing at 89.8 percentage. He averaged at least 25 points a game in his three seasons in Wyoming, then made the NBA debut with the Cincinnati Royals in '66. Later played for the Chicago Bulls, the Bucks, the Royals, before being traded to the Lakers at the end of the '70-'71 season. He concluded his seventh-season career with the Baltimore Bullets in '73 and had a career scoring average of 14.5 points per game. He played one season in the American Basketball Association in San Diego when it was coached by Wilt Chamberlain. Robinson lived in Hawthorne, California, where he most recently worked with recreational programs in the Los Angeles area. He survived by his wife, Nancy, and four brothers, two sisters, and a host of family.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Keretz.
I just had something on that same topic. As a big Laker fan way back when, I remember Flynn Robinson, and he would have been a Hall of Famer without a doubt if he were in the three-point era because he would shoot wherever he was open. If it was 30 feet, 35 feet, 25 feet, he would just pop in those long-distance shots. If you got three points for that, he would have been the most prolific scorer in the NBA. As it was, he had a great career and was probably the most amazing long-range shooter of his time.
Thank you, Mr. Keretz. To that, I was unaware of. Any more adjourning motions? Seen none? Members, this meeting is adjourned.